Morning. This is the February one, two thousand and twenty-three special meeting of the Library Board of Trustees. We'll begin with a call order meeting. Let's begin with a special allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is a call because this is a, this meeting is being recorded for hybrid meeting as such. Our votes taken would mean on a roll call with each member of the board. Stating any time they vote. But we'll begin with a roll call. Ron O'Connor, Chair.
Rita Rougeau, Trustee. Anne Maitzen, Trustee.
Jocelyn Tavares, Director.
Good morning, everybody. I ask for a motion and go through executive session under Massachusetts General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions for contract negotiations with non-union personnel. So may I have a motion to that, please?
I move that we move to executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A two.
Second.
Rita Rougeau, I second.
Okay, we'll vote. Ron O'Connor, I.
Rita Rougeau, I. Anne Maitzen, I.
Now, a complete session will return after executive session. Okay, we're, we're back from executive session. Prom to order the meeting of the Dikin Book Library Board of Trustees, Special Meeting of February one, two thousand and three. Do you need to vote to bring it back into session?
You probably should just.
Yeah. So. Please, please go and get something. It's looking outside some more. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take a motion. All the time.
I move that we return to general session.
To not need to state our names.
Oh, Anne Maitzen, I move to turn to general.
Rita Rougeau, second.
If you have a motion to return to general session, all favors say, I, Ron O'Connor.
Rita Rougeau, I. Anne Maitzen.
Right, sorry. Okay. So our, our agenda amended this morning to add the community preservation of patients. For those who haven't seen the most recent one. We're going to begin today to talk about the, the collection development policy. Follow up to our meeting on January twenty. And I want to summarize. So I'll begin with sort of summarizing my takeaway, my overall takeaway from that to summarize the issues. The, the trustees, director, head administrator, received messages of concern about the library's collection. If I could summarize what those are. One was access to certain materials, certain topics to minors. And another was that you, that the library's approach to marketing voting materials was targeting minors in ways that include those second concerns. And finally, a third point, and I'll ask you to jump in if you have others that I might miss, was that the library's collection was perceived as being adequate representative of diversity of thought, interest, topics, et cetera. So before I turn it over to you, this is, this is important events in the industry of the library and trustees. I think it's important to set precedence and the key part of that precedent is taking all concerns serious from the public. And I, I personally am taking seriously a lot of time in their favor into the issues. So I, but before we, before we launch a discussion, do you feel like I've summarized accurately the three key points?
Yeah.
Access to material, voting materials, and the diversity of the collection. Okay. Professor. So we had, we had some good feedback at our meeting on the twenty-fourth. I think that was a helpful part of the meeting to do that. Helpful part of our process here from members of the general public. And I'm going to share just key takeaways and ask you to do the same. What they instructed me was to the library. Everybody appreciated and recognized the importance of libraries in this community, yes. It was also recognition of the importance of, of children as part of the community. It's part of that community that has access to children. Part of that who who we, the library needs to serve. Third thing was, I think that there my, my takeaway was that there was pretty consistent, there's consensus on respect to the First Amendment Constitution. And so those are my three takeaways. Invite the two of you, if you want to add. What you've heard.
The thing that I would add additionally, and I think I heard this from almost everyone, was the importance of family and parental guidance for children in the selection of library materials. And clearly, in reviewing the ALA materials, they absolutely support that. That parents are the important factor in what children read. But the parents need to be, as the people said, parents need to be part of that process in order for that to happen.
I agree. Now, as I said before, parents. Not for doing seven minutes in parents. Important. Share. In the back.
So a little bit more of the, the history here or background record is that was, we had Jocelyn Tom, Tom Mustrid, and I met with the principals associated with the parents. We had a good meeting. And one of the takeaways from that for me was there were a couple of, couple of items that they that group had requested that we consider. I was, I had concerns about the about the legality of a couple of those requests and so on. We've been in town council. I read, read the town council's letter into the record at the last meeting. And summary of that, two two key requests, which is to access to materials to minors. And the town council opinion was that that was unconstitutional, not permissible. It's not something that we want trustees to pursue legally. And I'm going to go through those, each of those, like one at a time, I think is a good place for us to do that now. If you have that when you I'm not going to read them, but I detect that it's, it's important to go through them one at a time. I'll, I'll add and quote again that one of the things I read at the meeting was an excerpt from the from the trustee's handbook from Massachusetts Board of Library which it states, and I've almost admitted this memory because it's so important. So the foundation of what we do as trustees, that I don't know if it's wrong, but it's, if you have it in front of you, where's effectively you are? That the test of a trustee's commitment is the ability to to respect. No, I'm going to have that in front of me because I don't think it's failing me. If you have it in front of you, please, one of you wants to read it at the final. But it was essentially, well, I can paraphrase it, it's to leave our personal opinions at the door. And whatever, however we feel about a particular topic as trustees is, is not as important as protecting intellectual freedom. So that's a good summary. You can read it into the, sorry, I'm reading it to the previous meeting. So I, I just point out that for, for me, that's like fundamental, that is fundamental to what we're doing here. And the other, the other key piece of this was not just that the findings or the opinion of town council with regards to the constitutionality of the access of materials to buyers. But also that we are bound by, not only by that rule of law, but we're bound by state statute. The statute that enables library board of trustees on material selection and the references specifically to the American Library Association, Association Bill of Rights, again, which I read into the record through this meeting. So that's the frame for the discussion is that there are some things that as trustees, we're limited to what we can do. And the, the important thing for me with that is that what standards do and principles and values? And so what's codified in the statute and what would exist in judicial findings, judicial decisions, is that provide consistency. And so let's just focus on Massachusetts, Massachusetts General Law, references to the Library Association Bill of Rights. And that's such that, that assure, ensures that no matter where you live in Massachusetts, the library is going to be able to follow any rules and standards. And that's, that's important, not only for life, but for public schools, for public health, for public, public safety. There are standards and rules that need to be followed. And consistency in, in performance and expectations regardless of where you live. So that your, the city or county you live in shouldn't affect those basic standards. And so we're, we're, we're bound by those and we're grounded in them. I think that's important. So I'm going to let the two of you talk a little bit more about your perspectives on this.
I'm trying to think where to start. I read lots and lots and lots of material from the American Library Association and from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. And everything absolutely underlines what you said about First Amendment and First Amendment rights. I absolutely agree that our job as trustees is to uphold those laws regardless of how we feel one way or another about any of those things. It's our duty. You pretty much summed up. I, I don't know what I could add that would make it different, Ron.
Well, you know, everyone has their own opinion. And like you said, we have to be basically neutral and we have to follow statewide regulations. I mean, we can't just say, oh, well, we're not going to do that. Because I end up having mostly a career.
And for underlying this, this, this respect for the people who have different opinions.
Right. Exactly.
Please to sit there, keep going today to or hold comment. And then some more, but to take this seriously, we also need to respect their opinions. It's, it's unprecedented in fact that this board trustees in my fifteen years to have needed to address an issue of this importance. And I think it's a privilege to be able to do this and be able to address it in a meaningful and respectful way. So I'm grateful for you to both of you to be on the same to do this. I work with them beyond this. So I, I will, we're going to now work through these specific changes that were requested. That's how we know the principals who had the concern about this. And the first was may, amending the library policy. I'm not going to read this because of the, the opinion of town, town council voices, this is impermissible, unconstitutional, and we, we ought not to pursue it and to continue with it. But that, that, that's not to dismiss the underlying concerns. The, the concerns that underlies this, I think are, are, I know are important. And so there may be ways in which these can be addressed without violating the Constitution or dying on failing to follow national laws. So I'm personally open, the, the ward is open and staff are open to dialogue and how we can achieve this. And I've got some thoughts that we could share later on, on the agenda about how we might accomplish that. And so that change number one, let's move on. And I'm not going to recommend we take a form on that and then advise of its impermissibility. Change number two is similarly advised by, and that's to remove a statement in the current policy that Tom House was also advised is inconsistent with, with the constitutional protection of the First Amendment. So we'll, I think we need to move on from that. I, I think the other, just in this, in this, in this context, amendments input from the general public on our policies and procedures. I welcome. I think it's important to have that. And but also maybe be mindful that these policies are, are created in many ways. I've worked with Jocelyn for fifteen years. And she and the trustees don't create these policies out of whole cloth. They, they, they come from, they derive from guidance from the, the Board of Library Commissioners and the experience of other libraries. And so we, we work from those documents as a foundation in building our own. Many times, they're, they're, they're standard language. It's boilerplate language that many libraries use. And we, that's part of that consistency that I think residents of the Commonwealth should expect. That, that everybody, regardless of where they live, should expect consistency with regards to standards and policies and procedures. Granted, of course, there's room for flexibility that owing to the size of the library, the sector of policies. Policies are important and it's, it's important that they're A consistent in one, one municipality to the other, but also grounded in, in law. So I will move on from that and as, as, as much as I appreciate the intent of that request, I think we're, we're bound by and guided by the idea of town council. The next change was to add two items to the collection development policy selection criteria. One is diversity of thought. And the other is balance of philosophical and ideological views. And so I, I'd like to have a, you know, a pretty good conversation about, about that. So I, I don't know what your, your thoughts about that. I find, you know, intensive. It only comes on in the conversation here. So I'd like to hear from you two of you, what do you think about, about this?
Well, I think there should be diversity for everyone. Everyone. You know, whether I, I, I read an article recently and I believe it was here in Massachusetts, someone was questioning some books that were brought in about Christianity. It, libraries to everyone. Everyone. And I think, you know, that's where the idea of collection should come in.
Intent was probably there in the collections because the language that the American Library Association uses in its laws, but I think it probably is a good thing to add that, but underline that we respect diversity of thought regardless of the thought and a balance of philosophical and ideological views. Understanding that it represents all sides. Now, it can only be balanced to extent that the materials are available. And that sometimes is an issue, I think. But I think that I think that it's important because again, the library represents all people, not just those on one side or another or in between.
Jocelyn, do you, if you have, do you have the policy in front of you? I know I didn't.
I don't have it.
Here. Either you have it standing or not. Okay. I'm going to go a certain path through this and not unfair. You have any comments? Actually, because I'm I guess when, when I, I, I reviewed this a, a few times and looked at the criteria. So the objective is to add these criteria, these particular criteria, and I, I understand the intent here. And I guess my first question is whether or not these are implicit in, in, in the existing criteria. Not, not just the criteria, but the entire, you know, documents should be conveying that, that very fact of diversity of thought philosophical and ideological views. While it's not explicit here in these criteria, so here's where I'm going. So I'm just going to throw this out because I, I as I mentioned earlier, there's a precedent here in our work, which I, I think is very important. And the first is getting input from the public. When we deliberate on policy, it's part of the agenda. And anytime I talk about library policy, we, we welcome public input on that. My so I'm going to throw this is whether or not these, these digestive changes are necessary to, to our development policy. And in, in the current requirement associated with this, I I, I, if, if we were to accept these, I, I'd want it to be done in the spirit of acknowledging not that we omitted these in our policy, but rather this is a clarification of our policy that I, I don't want to send a message that yes, our policy has neglected these these items because I think that, that's unfair. If it's a way of amplifying the message, clarifying the message with regards to those particular issues. I think that's important, but I think it needs to be done. If we are to do this and make these changes, we need to do it in, in the appropriate context of, again, amplifying and clarifying the foundations of our, because I, I, I don't want the message to be that, oh, our policy didn't respect that, those two items. And it's entirely, well, it may not be listed in the criteria, it's, it's fundamental to what we do. And so while it may be implicit, I may say it's implicit, is it important enough to us as trustees? And trustees in our role and represent residents of the town site that we feel it's important enough to put it in there, put them in there, then that's fine with the further and important. But on the other hand, are there other aspects of these criteria that are missing? Are there, are there other things in the criteria that are missing? I think that's where I, you know, roll call needs to kind of go through these and say, do we have criteria that are a similar tone to the, or message, tone's not the right word, but a lot of these are very kind of me, because I, I think it's important. So thank you for finding these. So one is, so the criteria are level of funding for materials, relevance to the library's mission and service roles, local demand, current usefulness or interest, information on recreational needs of community, authority and accuracy, importance as a record of the times, relevance to existing collections, strengths and weaknesses, high standards of quality and content and format, present availability, suitability of format, durability and ease of use and relevance to the history of Dikin. So this, I've read this, I don't know how many times to see how these recommended changes can fit into this or whether they are implicit and by intent captured in these. And one thing that strikes me, relevance to the library's mission and service roles. Diversity of thought and diversity, the words starting broadly, but the philosophical and ideological respecting a wide range of philosophical and ideological views is relevant to the library's mission and service roles. That's where, that's the foundation of what we do is to ensure that we have, that we respect diversity of thought. It also comes in, in current usefulness or interest. A lot, you know, when you talk about diversity of thought or philosophical and ideological views, those, those change. Is the never changing set of issues and concerns among the population and the role of the library is to be on top, on top of that and to be aware of that and to, to make sure that it's collecting quite so that the place where I feel it's, it's already here. It's, I, I don't want to overprocess this because I've, I've got a reputation for doing that. So I'll, I'll acknowledge that. But I, I've shared what I think about how or if these are important to be included as additional criteria or acknowledged in some other way in this in the document. I, I, I think, again, I don't, I'm dismissing the the request because I think it's important. And if it's not in the policy somewhere, and I believe it is, if not in the criteria or such. But let's go back, the request is actually to include it in the criteria, not to make sure it's included in statements, the policy itself. So your thoughts, because I'll, I'll ramble on on.
My thought is, should we look at the mission to make sure that the language is clear in the mission? Not that we do the mission, but if, if we're saying that that information is laid out in the mission to make sure that it, it's really, I understand based on the philosophy, but that it's actually those, those sort of things are in writing, to be clear. I thought I had a copy of the mission, but I'm not.
Something else, because I think it might help to inform. Okay, so here's this, going back to read a lot of things and the this policy statement and everything the government is what the library does in, in Massachusetts, the reference to the Bill of Rights, the Library Bill of Rights. In the Library Bill of Rights, which, which our policy addresses and, and says that we endorse the Library Bill of Rights, I'm going to recommend a change to that language. But the, the second, the second item, Library Bill of Rights, is that libraries should provide materials and information presenting all points of view on current and visceral issues. Libraries should not be prescribed or removed because of partisan. So let's take that out. Because the fundamental thing is that we're, we're adhering to the Library Bill of Rights. The Library Bill of Rights essentially addresses those two items. And I, I would suggest that if the criteria, if we want to modify the criteria, and I think this is an important thing. We, we do reference the Library Bill of Rights, the criteria might very well state that the criteria are such that they conform with the Library Bill of Rights. And I think that would encompass much more than, than these specific requests, which I think, again, I, I think those, those requests are important. It's, it's like your precedent and making sure that we're, we're, we're respecting input that we get from, from the residents and making sure that we are incorporating them. All right, so here's my fear, if we, if we add these two, some others will, will offer others and will be continuing adding criteria that, that may just, just make it tedious.
Only that's pretendant.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could say that as well. So I, I, I'm going, I'm going to recommend. Let me see if we have any additional thoughts.
I don't think we should be doing, you know, make sure that it's relevant.
Seriously, yes, we have a, we can do that today, but we could, we could also just table that to, to another meeting where we could. No, I, I, I'm, I'm embracing these comments, I guess. I think it just makes us better. And I think we've had a good conversation here, we could have a deeper conversation. I trust that we'll get some comments here today, who will help to further inform. But I, I like your idea of, let's look at the criteria. And I wonder if we could ask you to see if there are criteria that others use that can, can help us that maybe that we've missed, they might have a stronger set of criteria. I, I do.
How long, excuse me, how long has, has that criteria been, that particular criteria been in existence? And how, you know, things change, so is it relevant? Does it mean additions, does it mean subtraction or reveal?
Okay, but, okay. I, I, I do want to say, just as chair, don't need a motion, but I agree as principles of what is being asked here. That those asks for changes are, those changes are important. The statements made there about diversity of thought and ideological and philosophical views are important. And the question is, how are they captured? How do we make sure that they're captured in our criteria, our processes, et cetera? I, I believe they are implicit or even explicit in, in reference to the Library Bill of Rights and, and our, and our mission and values. But again, there's a risk, the precedent here, come back to that, is if we amend it, you know, we are entertaining additional amendments and then the criteria don't get unwieldy, but just get long. And so with, I guess, with, with due respect to the request, I think we should, we should continue to discuss this. I think it's open, important dialogue for us as trustees to, to take a look at the criteria that we use. To look at the entire language of the, of the policy, the collection goal and policy, and see if we can strengthen it, and make it more powerful, make sure that it's capturing what the residents are telling us.
Do you want to hear the mission?
Sure.
The Dayton Public Library provides materials and services for the residents of Dayton from infant to elder, for the discovery of ideas, the joy of reading and the power of.
I went back to that, this new changes. So we're on to change number four. And yeah, with regard to change number three, Tom Castle did not have an opinion with regards to that. But I, I think we had a very good discussion of that in the broader part. So the next is action to the library and revision. The Dayton Public Library attempts to represent all sides of controversial issues as far as the building space and materials and budget allows. Selection is based on the criteria stated in the policy. So if I'm understanding this correctly, that, that is what I just read was the revisions of policy. And then there's some, some language here that's off, after that, that's not in quotes. We can clarify that, but I think there are some questions here that I, that are due in response. Apologize if that's possible. So I'd like to specifically sort of move down a little bit further in that change number four. And as I'll read this, it says there's a space limitation and it's identified that there's an imbalance representation of perspective on a controversial issue. What is the library, of this policy for making space? How is material deferred, returned to the public, destroyed? Moved in, moved to a different facility or put it in storage? So this is a, so you want to talk a little bit, Justin, about our policy, there's two parts of this. Like what do we do? What do we do with identifying imbalance? But what happens to, we, we recycle, but you know, when books get old or outdated, we do a process.
There's been a lot of adjustments in the last few years because of our situation being located in our temporary space. Our temporary space, the way that we're treating collections is that we rotate books in and out, things that have been in the collection historically. And we add the newer purchases to those collections. Pay attention to some of the backlist titles that are being requested. So there are certain books that are if a movie's coming out, then that book might receive some attention, we'll bring it over. But we try to rotate the in-demand titles, the newer titles. We've been trying to balance what is used. We rely on circulation data and condition of the book, physical condition of the book to remove items. So because of our space, we've always had this. If a book hasn't gone out in so many years, you have no choice but to remove it, withdraw it from the collection. And in the past, we have authorization to donate it to the friends for a book sale. But a lot of these things haven't been in play since our fully open. We used to have an ongoing book sale, we, we can't keep up with the number of books that come in to the library required by statute to provide versus our whole collection. I don't know if I've answered any of your questions, because I feel like it's, I feel like it's an uphill battle to try to we haven't discarded any.
That's the question, what's, what's a bad title?
It would be something like an older book. Like one of the older books that are, that continue to remain popular. Right, or where the product's saying even, where it's an older title, but it hasn't lost its popularity or reach. Dr. Seuss title, any number of holiday titles, children's room that we bring out every year.
I, I, I recommend, Justin, you should, you and I should work on a response.
Okay.
This, by a response, probably, just want, we're on table, really, do you have anything?
No, I'm just, you know, library staff, library staff is the type of situation, maybe the best job they can, when the new library it's going to be long. You know, it's like, you got to win, I mean, it's you can't remember how many times, you know, they voted down not to be into an incredible situation. They're saving it over there and they get a bigger red alert. It's just, you know, we've got to work a little while under certain circumstances. And, you know, spaces type, I had one book and you didn't have it, so very kind of funny to move sales. And it took me a while to get to it, and I still hadn't got it for it. And I went to Michigan, found the paperback edition. I bought it, so I've been treating it that way, but it's like, they go out of the way, you know, get books and.
So that's remarkable, remarkable work that you did. Even the library, I don't know, change, change five, give some donations, what happens to give some donations? The library contributes, does not contribute, which is a criteria. Dayton residents donate books to the main library, it's first to the overall library system. I couldn't really about that, I'm mindful.
We, we haven't accepted donations in some time because we have no place to store that. If it is a lot, a lot of times, we receive popular fiction books and will replace the title, the, the copy of the book. So if someone donates a nicer, great item, well, will replace our book shop. So we, we do try to add where we collection. But we can't use everything. Yeah, we just don't have the so again, those are authorized to go to the price for the purposes of a book sale, which we haven't gotten. I don't have good answers, sorry.
That's okay, that's, that's fine. I, I do want to say in response to that, that the, the trustees our staff, professional staff trained in library science to make a lot of these decisions. And when staff come to us, director in particular, with questions, but again, guided by the criteria, which the, which the trustees have adopted. And I, again, in the interest of time, I'd like to, like to talk about a couple of other things. And I, I want to hear from you have a hard stop, I love it. And I'm going to get a minute, I'll get to ask, but we go change our agenda so we can get to the public comments. Because I think we, we can have, I think we're going to need more discussion after we hear more and this guy, and so I, you, you, the two of you, I, I'm going to count on you to say, okay, enough process, but my wife does it with me all the time. So, and my coworkers, right, the process is important. I, I do want to talk about the, the two things that are left on the list. And what is the diversity of the collection? I guess we talked about that. Marketing, we, we have, we have taken steps in response, where we had our Instagram page specific to, we need to change that. I, I guess, there's a statement made that I, I just want to clarify in, in our selection, in the selection of library trustees, the, the staff under direction of trustees, that there's nothing nefarious in the selection of our, of our collection. And we welcome, welcome recommendations to build our collection. There's, there's been some statements made, an email that, that our collection in, in deep last week, that our collection is not diverse enough. It's missing some key topics or titles or views or diversity. There's nothing intentional and nefarious about our, our collection, our decisions regarding collection. Welcome comments from people, recommendations to ensure that that is. So if, if people have knowledge where the collection is lacking, we, our role is to hear that. And so if someone has done a review of our collection and found, found some deficiencies in it, that would be great to hear. Justin and I talked yesterday, just, just the two of you know, about her doing the diversity audit, that there are tools and means by which that can happen, other libraries do it. And I think it's an important step in light of, of the criticism of of, of our collection. And I, I take that criticism as constructive. And so I think it's an important next step. And if, without going too deep into what that means, Justin, you want to get the elevator speech about what that means. I'd be glad to hear it, just for, for their benefit.
It will be an, an analysis of the collection and the different subject areas that are covered. And where we have gaps in the collection potentially can be addressed. And it should point out what we're missing and we can take steps to address that. And I started inquiring about that in December. But I've been pulled in a few different directions. So it's something that has been in the back of my mind that I want to pick up again and analyze what we have in our genres. And it, that, that's always on my mind. Because I, 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 I see the town, we have different users. A lot of our purchases are based on where we have a lot of hold, like when people request books that we may not have. People do request individual titles of us for purchase. So I, I want to balance, I want, I want to do it right. I'm trying to say it.
Do we get many requests of books that people would like to see?
Um, on occasion we do. A lot of times it's with the publication of a new book. So on occasion we do.
There's substantial budget for books.
Yeah, it's.
So this is plenty of money for books.
We're required to spend a certain amount, a certain percentage of our budget in order to maintain our reciprocal agreements and get our funding, which is huge because we can't, we can't support the town with collections that we have.
And those, those funds for, for books are largely from the town budget.
Yes.
So all the reason why it's important to help. So, and it's just one last question, this, can we talk about this yesterday? This whole concept of the diversity audit, is that, is that relatively new? I mean, a lot, a lot of libraries have done them.
Within the last few years, I think we've always had some kind of analysis for subject areas. I think this is a deeper dive.
Yeah, okay. And so, you know, I personally think, and, and, but to you, that we've got last week, we met this week, I think these meetings need to be more frequent. We need to have another special meeting to continue talking about this. And we're going to hear from folks today. And I think that's, that's just going to continue to, to inform what we're doing and, and to do it right. To, in ways representative. So I don't think I have anything else, I'm looking at my notes. We've got a little, we've got more work to do on this and I can, basically with progress here. Now I've got a family inheritance that I have to deal with, and so definitely a hard stop. And so I would recommend, I'm going to ask for a motion that we jump to public comments. So we skip ahead on the agenda.
Peter Russo, I make a motion that we jump to public comment. And Mike Senna, second.
In a discussion? Vote, Ron O'Connor, I.
Peter Russo and Mike Senna, I.
Okay, we'll move to public comment, subject to the, the limitations of the parameter. I think it's not a fair word, the, the parameter is that, at the previous meeting, and we're still working on our policy, but for the purposes of this meeting, it's two minutes per person. Each person gets an opportunity to speak once, no shit, it's all on this. The folks have it privately, but the chair is able, excuse me, is able to define parameters of public comment. Comments are limited to two minutes. I may not be given to another speaker. Comments must address agenda items, or they can be related to any topic under the board trustees' prescription. The chair, they said it's limited on the total time available for public comment. Could you adjourn the meeting no later than 10:30? Although I meant that it's not, it's not limited to 10:30, thankfully, the time is now. And make one other comment about that, I would really please. Make one other comment about that, I would really please, like, pop into my last time. Public comments, I think, again, first time in my fifteen years, it might not happen. It, it certainly met my expectations for a successful, uh, community dialogue on this and I. At least there are people here hopefully who have some additional comments to make, so with that, um. Well, can, can somebody else keep time, because I was pretty happy to do that, but everybody kept doing it last time, so. We'll start, we'll start with people in the room and then we'll go to people on Zoom, so who's first?
Thank you. Leonard Hall, seven sixty Main Street, I. First of all, we commend trustees for their courage to have these open discussions. And what I'm about to say is not a criticism of a library because it is typical of libraries all across this country. The use of technology, I've heard much discussion about storage problems, the availability of books. One of the reasons sales was created. Was the realization that space wise, no library can have every book. And I just wondered whether modern day use of technology, as you go in through your budget process, you put more emphasis. Into sales and technology and the use of technology, especially with you. Cause if you think about it, it says, every book is available, it may not be in the building. But you can get that. Probably within less than a week, is that using the general honor of request. So please consider that. I get it, it has been very tranquil the past two years and space is very limited. But you may not need to spend so much money in books. You may want to take a look at what sales may be missing and supplement that. Rather than buying a book that many other libraries already have. Thank you.
A quick question, try to give me a list of, was sixteen fifty Wellington. The, uh, it's probably related to Mr. Paul's question. When the library purchases, or when sales purchases a book, does it purchase that book? I mean, do, do individual libraries? Purchase the book or is it purchased by the system? In other words, can money, the money that you, Ron, you said. It's quite a, it's a good supply of funds available. Can that money be put toward electronic purchases so that there are more available on sale?
Um, I, I would, well, yeah, I, I, I just wanted to point out that we're. As, as we did last time, we're, we're taking questions. Instead of, kind of, you know, we're going to do a lot of dialogue, but I, I think your question is simple enough. Um, perhaps Jocelyn, you feel comfortable answering that?
We do. You're referring to the overdrive collection? For all of our digital collections?
The overdrive, oh, oh, yeah, I get slightly confused.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Your own sales unit.
We have both sales purchases. E-books and audiobooks and magazines. And we have a shared digital collection. We also, the Dyson Public Library also purchases. E-books and audiobooks for the shared collection, we have a reciprocal arrangement. And like our physical collection, if a Dyson, a Trin. Wants that item, it goes to them first and then it's shared throughout the collection.
But that could be another way to allocate funds that, that we do.
Oh, yeah, no, we, we do, I, I, I feel like demands for that.
Thank you, yeah, okay, thank you, okay, okay, so we, we, we're, we're here in vacations and dialogue, so I want to acknowledge that. Last time when we did the slash meeting, our first time, it was, ready to mess, thank you, um. I don't want to just go too far, I think, in, in that regard, so, um. I, I think it's something we're going to have more of an open dialogue conversation, but I do want to hear from others here.
Andrew Boynton, what do we, today? I just want to say, although, over the years, people have looked at government. Government has done a lot of things that. Forced American people to stop trusting the government. Doing things behind closed doors, secret meetings, limiting input, I don't want to see Dyson get to that. Based upon a policy on the agenda today and what was implemented last week. You talked a lot about public input, you want public input, you want public opinion. But you limit people to speak for two minutes. Last week, at the meeting they attended, one person got cut off. Which was one of the reasons that meeting. Topics were out of the agenda, because I mean, but other people weren't cut off. I just think that if you do truly want people's opinion and you want to help. Let people have a chance to talk, have a separate meeting where it's just input from the public. It just doesn't give a good view. Of what's trying to be accomplished, I don't think any one of us that did send concern then. Think that the library is trying to do something that's deceiving to the town people in Dyson. We just want to make sure that the young children in Dyson are protected. And we're not asking for banning of books or taking them so they're not available. Every single book that's out there should be available to everyone under the right circumstances. But when you look and you refer to Massachusetts of, well, they do it everywhere. Well, people leave other communities in Massachusetts and come to Dyson because we may not do it. Like every other community does, and that's what attracts people to Dyson, not saying that we break the law.
Right.
Okay, I'll talk, you guys wait to live.
Robert Wood, one fifty eight J Street, I totally agree with Andrew, the two minute timeline was a little too short. Maybe we want to increase that to four or five minutes, I think that's asking too much. A lot of people were short on time. And I think everyone missed our point. At the last meeting, you know, we weren't asking the library to ban any, we're not banning, we're not promoting. We are just concerned about having certain books and you know what they are. On display, but we don't mind if you have them, you know, in a secure location, if a parent wants to sign up certain books. But the citizens of Dyson. You know, the voters, the taxpayers, the majority of the people, you don't want those type of books in. Plain view, the children to look at, maybe some parents do, but I'm going to tell you the majority does not. In the eyes of the public, in Dyson. And throughout America, uh, library has really taken a bad rap. And the Dyson library is relying on the back end to finish. The existing library, the new library, they're trying to put together. I've always been a big supporter of a library and I think some of you know that. And I would like to continue to be a big supporter of the library. So, you know, we, it really looked like. We were trying to ban stuff, made us look like the bad guy. But in the eyes of most. The bad guy. Now I want you to be there. So please take that into consideration, thank you.
Any else?
Yes, I can wait, Ross and Delphine, born in Lincoln Avenue. Um, you mentioned earlier about the importance of Bill Rights, um, you know, we do live in a country free, perhaps the greatest. Most three hundred in the world, which is a blessing, um. And when they had access to whatever they want to read, whatever they eat, whatever, how they want to live, um. Bill Rights is fine, but we have to realize that there, there are obscenity laws. And some parents view some of these books that are being distributed or being displayed in some public libraries across the country. Uh, they have a lot of obscene and pornographic, uh, content. And so with that in mind, um, you know, obscenity is not, is not protected under the First Amendment. So I just wanted to, wanted to know that.
John Burrows, Pleasant Street. We completely, we're putting photographs. I don't think kids should go into a library and be exposed to harmful, confusing, disgusting books. Yeah, maybe you can lock them off, I think that's a good idea, lock them, you don't expect, I think. One comment that you made was that, well, parents can watch, a library should be a safe place. Parents shouldn't have to go in and just like research or where, where's all the bad books, you put it away, you know. People should be set aside, I repeat, our kids should be subject.
Thank you. So. And. Oh, thanks, thank you. Okay, we'll go on Zoom, who has, uh, Paul Reynolds, I see your hand raised, so go ahead.
Hey, uh, good, good morning and thank you, um. I just had a quick question that was based on a real life experience that occurred just this morning. Um, I've got an eight-year-old daughter who came home on Monday and said, hey dad, I've got chorus early before the bus comes this week. And the teacher needs you to drop me off on Wednesday, so. Patron of the arts that I am, I packed her up and I drove her to school this morning. And once we get to reception, the very kind receptionist gently tells me that chorus was canceled. An email got sent out last night and the children were notified yesterday. And, uh, my, my daughter makes a face that I recognize that says, oh yeah, oops, I remember that now. So something that I was thinking about, uh, mostly from a due date and late fee perspective, but I suppose it could also, uh, you know, apply here. Uh, is there a way or could the away be implemented for parents to verify what titles their kids have checked out and when the due dates to return are and that kind of thing?
I don't know, we haven't answered that question, it's.
Some parents, when they sign up their child for the library card, they use their personal forms of contact. So if you have, um. A parental email on file with a child's card. You should get the email reminder if that's the choice that, that, that's how you want to be contacted. The same is true with the, um, the cell phone, if you want a text message reminder or. Any of that, um. A child's library card is. Is issued with, um, that parent's consent, you sign for that card, so. It's how you. Manage that in your, your home, um. So I, I don't know if that completely answers your question or not, but.
No, that's good information, thank you, I appreciate it.
Uh, thank you, favorite Mr. Reynolds, uh, any other comments on Zoom?
No, no, thank, uh, thank you, I appreciate it.
Nobody else has their hand raised, okay, so, thank you. And the point, point was taken about the duration of comments and I, I had no offense, um. We, we saw that I turned the time to be held to somebody else because I was about to, and I followed that. Because I rose at one point, said, I've got a, a person, I felt badly about that. I also felt badly that we limited time to two minutes, like we did here today, as I pointed out, we haven't. We haven't had this experience before. And when, when I set the timer to two minutes prior to the meeting, I had no freaking idea fifty people, a hundred people wanted to speak. And I felt it was fair to hear from everybody. Uh, the, I, I did have some thoughts about standing, but we're only, we're going to limit. A little on time for public comments at thirty minutes and I felt that was unfair, I kind of most support things we heard from everybody, at least once we wanted to speak. And, uh, going forward, and I, I took that same two-minute limit on here too, because it appears on the agenda. But I, I'm sure we're open to the kind of dialogue that you folks are, uh, you folks and others are. Are anxious to have and, and are committed to have, and that's, that we're on as, as chair of trustees is to. Ensure that we hear you, and then you're part of a conversation, and, and in that conversation. It's best not to happen within the trustees meeting unless it's a trustees meeting dedicated to this purpose. We, we have other agenda items, you know, last week we did it, um, as part of trustees meeting, so I, I, I think a, a more, um. Deeper conversation about this is important, that they're, they're very important. Questions raised here, and, and that has to do with, with the, the, um, the interest of the public, but, but also about the role of the library. As a service to the, to the library, and how we, um. That, that we retain, because as I said earlier, there are certain, um, boundaries placed on what we can do and, and, um. As you're saying, Mr. Horton, people come here because, uh, you know, the character of, of the town. And there's an even other town, and so there, there are, I, I. I grew up in the city of Worcester. It's a small town, I mean, it was thirty years ago, this town, so that's, that's a big culture shift. Um, so I'm, I, I embrace what you, what we're trying to accomplish here together, which is, um. ensuring that the interest of residents here and, and our, our people. Um, but recognizing our obligations, which I think you do, constraints placed on us, but. By national laws, in regards to the, you know, like people's rights. But there, I, I acknowledge that there may be room for the kind of conversation you have within, within those boundaries. Uh, I, I think the trustees need to talk about, you'll see later in the agenda, records, community outreach and education, it's a very, a very spirit. That, um, that that's on, right, I thought it was important, again, because we got the time, um. It's more initiative for everybody today. So thank you, I appreciate everybody who's here, um. This is, this is a conversation that, um, I'm committed to continuing, like.
Yes, I could just have a third one, second one. Just a lot of knowledge of library staff, they have worked under very. Conditions over the past year and, you know, you're absolutely right, over the years we've had opportunity to go in for a new library and. Now to, they set the library down, so now something has to be done now. So yes, I, I mean, thank God we have a trailer for that temporarily, they're working under conditions. I just wouldn't want to see a hiccup. For us to move forward, where we have the opportunity to have a beautiful library. I think you've seen overwhelming support between the board of selectmen, between the C P C committee, where they accepted the application to move forward. I, I just don't want to see a hiccup because a certain group of town, they get offended. You have to make everybody happy, but you can't hide behind a lot of, so, well, we can do this because there is room to move. And I just, I just want to say that, you know, thank you, thank you for going with you, but it just causes that. So many things cause people to look at it, that something being done the wrong, something I wouldn't concede that, the upper layers. The library went forward, because I have always been a supporter of the library, if not my wife and throwing out. So, got to make sure that we support the library, I just want to make sure it does it right way for everyone. You know, I don't agree with everything that's in the library, but he may agree with something that I don't agree, but it's not right to take it away from him.
Do it or do you have some, sure, please.
I think we all agree we need to protect our children, I taught for thirty-seven years, but, um. I'm, I'm seventy-six years old, I've been to the library since I was a child. And you referred to Mrs. Stone, we all love her dearly. And another day she gave me her number, we went into the library, she took a bunch of books and she broke my number. Years later, when I was older, my number was six, six, six. And it never gone on, so I didn't, older, but ever presented, you know, so it's like.
You know, with the bow.
Libraries are just the hive of the gene. I, I, I did, there were some people in town who disagreed with the library, it was just a waste of money, it's. And then just so many, we, we have to work.
And those people believe that or not, I'm going to that.
So, um, and. Oh, yeah, I also wanted to iterate that libraries. Now we have, you know, it kind of, first we can afford that laptop. I think that. And then, um, I'll say. Libraries is a great source for, you know, finding. Know your resume, what the, basically network. So it's just beyond the book, so that way.
Exactly, there's been. I, they posted a picture of what's going on with the library in town on Facebook and I shared it. And, um, one of my classmates disagreed that the libraries were useless and wasting money, and now I.
And now I, another one of our classmates responded and went after her because she very close to them. And it's like, I wanted to say, well, it's not just the book. The whole soul, the soul, just so helpful.
I love, I love, I was just going to say how much I love dialogue and how much I'm a kind of social worker. I work with children. I certainly understand that protection of children. I also work with all people, but, uh, initially I started with you. Um, I like hearing what other people have to say because most times day in and day out, you don't hear people talk about the passion that you have or with the passion that you have. And I have that same kind of passion about the library, which is why I ran for, would have trusted you because I care about the library. So thank you, everybody, for all your comments and for showing up. And there are a lot of empty chairs here with the people that had other things to say that didn't show up. But I appreciate every one of you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Um, I personally have a long history. Personal life, community gain, like my space. And so, um, I we're focused, we had a meeting this morning, um, regarding the steps with C and C. The application to the Jive Hall, I've been signed for. Uh, we have the trustees. And so I, I afford to a building. Did you say you had a major on? Not, not, not proceeds. Oh, building committee? Not building. Like, I never liked it. Talk about the C and C. Yeah, but you were asking them to go along. Uh, I don't want to talk about this either. Okay. Um, I, I want to lose my train of thought. At one time, I and others in the room wanted a new library. I've been involved with, you know, gone my years in trustee. Um, but I've been involved with. We're going to have a new book. Hopefully, if everything goes well, we're going to have this wonderful building down the street. And I've been focusing on celebrating the new building and with this dialogue and climate, this topic of celebrating not only that, but the belief that it has the full support, um, of, of the community. And it's designed not just the bricks and mortar, but also what it does in the. So I appreciate this. We're going to have that building, but I think we're also going to have the library. Talking about twenty first century library, tonight I've come on to build. Because that's been in my mind for so many years. And I just dialogue with, I very appreciate it. But the library has a nice, uh, community. I appreciate we're, we're involved in this before. I would, when I have some more, there's some more. I, it's an opportunity here. I'm committed to dialogue. I must consider that this is myself concerning the ways, you know, the building, the library, um, funding a sector. We will get access, not for today, one, one.
I've been with the church before, training for the library. That church, Austin Church, the ones that I was present with, I believe, um, anything.
Both public comment purposes, it's meeting, but things that, and, and we just want to get, these things we need to do absolutely today. And we got set up again, perhaps soon. Um, okay, so what we, what is our most compelling, I don't want to generalize or pivot back to that. Uh, I think it was the, uh, well, Justin, I'm referring to you. What, what do we need to follow by eleven five?
I just, I have an updated budget only to plan our potential contracts. Ratification with, uh, library staff is part of the plan. And it's an anticipated, um, two percent from what I present. So that budget line is going up to one hundred thirty four thousand nine eighty to a final three hundred seven thousand seven ninety two oh eight. That number is inflated because of, um, you have a place holder for, for time that is being, uh, so that's, I, I can pass it around so you can see it.
You need one somewhere?
Thank you.
It's a positive as it's coming. Okay, so can we vote on this?
I, I would.
Yeah.
I, I'll present both budgets. I have a budget meeting with, um, the town administrator and town accountant on Monday. So I would present both to them. So it's, it's there. I just.
We need a motion.
We need a motion to approve the revised budget.
I move that we approve their, and Mike's, and I move that we approve the revised budget.
Reader, Russia, one second.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll go to a motion. Ron O'Connor, I.
Reader, Russia, I, and Mike's, I.
There is the two, one.
Two, one.
Okay, um, next item of business, uh, I believe Jocelyn is the community preservation committee. Application, Jocelyn, um, Administrator Ron and, uh, our consultants met this morning and so we have the application. Need to do that in person to this meeting.
I have the, I don't think I had it at the time. Then I came over.
Uh, well, I, the, the purpose here is right now the application. I'm going to flog it.
That's okay.
Um, the purpose of the, the application currently lists, um.
I have it here. Um, gee, she just sent it, so I just need to get it printed.
Does it need to be signed?
Yeah, I think.
All right, I'm, I can go over with you after.
No, I, I think I, I think this was, this.
You have to leave.
Basic information item. I don't know if it's a vote, it's what it needs to be. Um, the, the CPC application is coming from, as it's written now, is coming from the, um, building committee. The library building committee with me as the co-chair signing it. Uh, we talked this morning about whether the application ought also to come from the trustees. So that I would sign it as chair of the trustees and chair of the building committee. And just wanted to agreements on that, that the application, that the trustees are submitting it. Um, with, is that correct, Justin?
Do we need a motion to that?
I think it would be, yes. Got a motion with authorizing me to sign the CPC application.
Reader, Russia, I make a motion that Ron O'Connor, um, has permission to sign CPC.
Yes.
And Mike's in second.
Okay, any discussion? Any questions about that? We've all seen it. Um, okay, go over Ron O'Connor, I.
Reader, Russia, I, and Mike's, and I.
I don't think I need to stand as chair to leave and sign. So I would sign in this book. And I think it gives more power to our application. Um, I think in the interest, in the case of time, because, um, I would, I would entertain a motion to adjourn unless, Justin, there's something compelling
I understand. Certainly.
To deal with today. We, we're coming up to meeting again soon. So, um, I'll, you can work with us and find another day to meet. Possibly, probably as early as next week. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, I, I move that we adjourn this meeting. Reader, Russia, second.
Okay, no discussion on motion, uh, to adjourn. Uh, we'll go. I.
Reader, Russia, I, and Mike's, and I.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Uh, thank you, Justin, for all the work in getting us prepared for this meeting. Um, sorry, we ran out of time.